The next presentation is on the airport feasibility study. And to continue the theme of economic development, we have Assistant City Manager Rick Buss, along with Eric Pfeifer from Kaufman and Associates, to present the results of the first of six airport feasibility studies analyzing the viability of developing an airport and air park in North Peoria. And Kevin Burke, if you could look at your phone for me, I'd appreciate it. Could you look at your phone for me, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Can you, is this on? Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you for the opportunity to present this study session item. One of our goals here is to make sure that everything, that everybody here tonight in the council understands, that everything we present tonight is fact. And the process of evaluating the feasibility and of an air park is all data-driven. That's the approach staff has taken. And if you remember, economic development is a top priority of council. Public safety, economic development, and water security. Those are your top priorities that you have directed us to pursue and deploy. An air park represents a significant economic development opportunity, and I want to emphasize "opportunity." The feasibility study simply represents just one part, one part of evaluating that opportunity. And really, really importantly, is a fully informed council can best make fully informed decisions, and they can disseminate that information to their citizens as well. I think that's very, very important. And that's our, that's our goal here, is make sure that the council is fully informed, as well as the public. So, a couple of things, let's talk about magnitude and why we would look at this and look at some of the recent studies that have been done on airports. Two weeks ago, City of Phoenix released a study that was done for the City of Phoenix Airport System. That includes Sky Harbor, Deer Valley, and Goodyear. Their annual economic impact, annual, is $44.3 billion. That study was done by ASU. I've put up there the link, so if anybody wants to link and read that study for themselves. Again, data-driven, fact-based. 2021, a company called IHS Market did a study on all the airports across the state of Arizona. $121.4 billion in economic impact. Again, there's, there's the link, if anybody wants to see it and verify that. So, when we look at the Peoria Air Park, the number you see up there, an annual total economic impact of a potential air park is $1 billion. That is the most conservative estimate that our economic impact consultant has come up with. $60 million in state and local tax revenue. So, the reason why you see a picture of the Super Bowl is that's the equivalent of having a Super Bowl in Peoria every year. So, it makes sense to study this opportunity. So, you might ask, why do we have economic development? So, in general, well, first of all, it's all about fiscal sustainability and responsible stewardship of the public's money. In general, economic development is, provides revenue to provide for necessary services and amenities. But I think what gets missed a lot is not just the capital, it's the maintenance and operations to provide these, for these assets. So, if we put an asset out there and we build one, if we don't have any funds to continue the M and O, we are in trouble. And it's, and all, and city management say, today's asset is tomorrow's unfunded liability. So, we need to have the funds to not only build the asset, we need to take care of it. It is also necessary to keep taxes low. Residential revenue is insufficient. So, if you took away economic developments, the dollars are generated through businesses and commercial and industrial, you will not have enough money to provide for those amenities and services. So, just to use, by example, is, a lot of city managers use this example. For every dollar, perhaps, that you take in on revenue from a resident, it takes you $1.25, $1.52 to provide those services. So, you always have a shortfall. So, this sets, you know, from a public policy perspective and from a mayor and council perspective, you have a choice. You can either have economic development, or you can raise taxes. This council has clearly said, we're going to pursue economic development, and staff has carried on with that directive. Okay. Quickly on the feasibility study, and then I'll be turning over here in a minute to the expert. Couple of things. The feasibility study does not determine whether an air park or air park will be built. Again, does not determine whether an airport or air park will be built. Later on tonight, there's budget. Council is not voting on an air park in the FY '24, '25 budget. It is not being voted on. So, we need to be that, very, very clear. We've heard a lot of rumors out there, a lot of misinformation, disinformation, that somehow tonight is about voting for an air park. It is not. The feasibility study is simply the first step in the evaluation process. I've listed up there the six that we're doing. The first four are required by the FAA. The other two are additional studies we're doing to look at the economic impact, not just for the airport, but to the surrounding property values. These are ongoing, these are not completed. It's also important that these are conducted by third-party independent experts. Staff's job is to bring the facts to you, to you, the council. And I will point out, for the benefit of the public, that not one member of council has sat in, in one of these economic, or working group meetings. Not one. It's all been staff and subject matter experts. And we will follow where the facts take us. So, there is not a predefined narrative that we're trying to get data to fit into facts. We're letting the subject matter experts look at this independently and see where those facts take us. So, involvement. Briefly, these are some of the folks on the, or groups that are on the air park technical advisory group. A lot of staff involvement, from, from engineering to planning, you know, in the city. Kaufman Associates, which is represented by Eric Pfeifer to my left here. Luke Air Force Base has been involved. City of Phoenix, you've probably heard about the two-page letter that we got from City of Phoenix. You're right, we did get that, that letter. And they expressed some challenges of what it would take to build an air park. Guess what, Mayor and Council? They're the same challenges that we share. So, I'd like to thank the City of Phoenix specifically for their support in helping us evaluate this potential opportunity. I think I saw Lieutenant Colonel Rusty Mitchell, who many of you know, formerly of Luke, he is on our team, to help make sure that Luke's mission is not only, you know, is insured, but it's also enhanced. So, no matter what we do as we move down this process, make sure that Luke is first and foremost taken care of. We've talked to U.S. senators to make sure that what's happening in D.C., in the FAA, around Consulting Group, the Independent Economic Analysis. Mr. Hessman is a charitable pilot and a vestentia resident. And I will tell you, I spoke to him today, and he said, "I would like to wait for all the facts to come out." I'm not decided, yet he's on our technical advisory group. But he wants to wait for all the facts to come out, go through the process, to make a fully informed decision or recommendation to you as a council. Of his prime policy group is a lobbyist group that we have in D.C. that helps us with FAA, and of course, the FAA has been involved. Okay. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Eric. So, Eric's going to take us through, you know, the technical aspects of what the feasibility study overview is and what the results are. So, take it away. You want, you want the clicker now?
Sure. Thank you. Mayor and Council, thank you so much for having me here today. Just real brief introduction of myself and my company. Kaufman Associates has been around since 1979, doing airport consulting work, specifically doing master planning, environmental studies, feasibility studies like this. So, airport work is all we do, and we do it all over the country, and we've done a lot of work for the airports in the Phoenix area. So, we're very familiar with the process, with the Federal Aviation Administration and the requirements that they have for airports, as well as the industry and what's going on within aviation in general. So, I'm going to give you a quick overview of the feasibility study that we've prepared here. This first exhibit shown here is the vicinity airspace of the Phoenix metropolitan area. And obviously, this is going to be dominated by the Class B airspace surrounding Phoenix Sky Harbor International Airport. The purpose of showing you this, because airspace is a pretty complex issue, is to explain and describe that part of the next step in this process, so beyond the feasibility study and looking forward to the site selection process, we need to be thoughtful in how a potential airport for the City of Peoria would play into the regional airspace system. We have a number of military operating areas and alert areas and things like that, and we want to make sure that this, a potential future airport, would work into that system of airspace. And so, we actually have a subconsultant that would be brought on specifically to evaluate the airspace, that potential issues that would come up with a new airport here, and they are very experienced in terms of evaluating very complex airspace. So, this would be something of high priority in this next step moving forward. This is the service area exhibit that we evaluated. And so, you see a 30 nautical mile ring around the City of Peoria, and that's roughly a, the standard service area for a general aviation airport, considering for the National Plan of Integrated Airport System, the NIPUS. The NIPUS is the, is the national system of over 3,000 airports. That include commercial service, general aviation, airports, and it serves as a system, the airspace system of the, of the, of the country, providing this infrastructure for air travel. And so, one of the interesting aspects of this exhibit here is, we're also showing the number of registered aircraft by zip code. And you'll notice that the Peoria area, its zip code has between 51 and 100 registered aircraft right now. And so, similarly to the presentation that you guys just saw about, you know, people traveling outside of Peoria to go and work, we're also seeing the registered aircraft right here locally, being based at other airports in other cities. And so, that is a potential huge revenue stream and tax revenue and things like that, that the airport is missing out on, or that the city is missing out on, because it does not have an airport. So, this is a really important factor when we look at the market that we're trying to serve here, and whether there is a demand for an airport locally. And, and so, there is a lot of registered aircraft in the region, and that is an important factor. You also see some of the regional airports, some of your competition, that would be Deer Valley, Glendale, all the way up over into Wickenburg. And so, these airports are all essentially serving what would be your local market potentially. So, this is the forecast summary that we've prepared. And so, based upon what we've identified as, as your market area, we think that there's the potential for 80-based aircraft to be able to base at a theoretical Peoria airport today. The Deer Valley Airport, for example, has over 500 individuals on waiting lists for hangar space. And that, that, some of those people, the, one of the individuals at the head of the line for one of those hangars has been on for over five years.
Can you repeat that one more time?
The, the first person on the, on the waiting list, waiting for a hangar.
Step back even further. So, repeat.
Sure, yeah, there's over 500 individuals on a hangar waiting list at Deer Valley Airport alone. So, that, and this is a common tale at all the airports within the metropolitan area. There's huge demand for hangar capacity. And so, that tells us there's absolutely a market for another airport in this area. And we think about 80 total-based aircraft, and that includes small single-engine pistons on up to more sophisticated aircrafts, such as business jets and turboprops and helicopters and things like that, that are going to be driving higher revenues in terms of fuel flowage and things like that. Over the course of about a 20-year period, we project the number of based aircraft could reach over 217 total-based aircraft. And airport operations, the takeoffs and landings occurring at the airport, right now, we estimate about 37,400 as a starting point, growing to over 149,000 total in a 20-year period. So, again, our analysis shows that there's a very, very strong demand for an airport facility in Peoria. The types of aircraft served are represented here in this chart, the aircraft reference codes. So, every aircraft, general aviation, commercial, are represented by their approach speeds and their wingspans. So, the, the way this is broken down, the A1 category there in the top left are going to be your smallest and slowest aircraft in the, in the fleet. Moving up, on up to the D5 category, which are going to be your wide-body commercial service aircraft. So, we, we have the C and D3 up to the D5 categories crossed out, because those, those categories are dominated by commercial aircraft, narrow-body and wide-body types of aircraft. And that's not the type of facility that we're talking about accommodating here in Peoria. This would be a general aviation facility, targeting, again, the wide range of general aviation traffic from small single engines on up to initially the small business jet class of aircraft, which are represented by that B2 category. Aircraft such as the Cessna Citation jets, Falcon jets, things like that. Over the course of 20 years, as the airport grows and expands its facilities, we see it accommodating critical aircrafts, such as the larger Gulfstream business jets, within the C/D2 and up to D3 category. So, the initial facility requirements that we identified for a potential general aviation airport in Peoria would include a single runway of 5,600 feet long by 75 feet wide, a full-length parallel taxiway, and the, pretty standard landside facilities to support up to 80-based aircraft, which includes a variety of hangar types and sizes, T-hangers, box hangers, conventional-style hangers. And that would also support any specialty aviation service operators or the airport businesses that would provide services and facilities to the base tenants. We'd also include aircraft parking aprons, general aviation terminal facility, and vehicle access, and parking lots along with that. So, these two graphics here show a prototype airport, both in the initial stage and in the built-out long-term stage that we've discussed. So, initially, the, that 5,600-foot-long runway and the safety areas associated with that would take up about 280 acres of property. That's going to include, again, the runway and the safety areas, as well as the landside facilities, aprons, hangers, vehicle access, and things like that. Ultimately, going to that larger design would look at extending the runway to 7,600 feet and widening the runway pavement to 100 feet wide. And so, that almost doubles, ends up doubling the, the space requirements of the airport to 550 total acres. But, starting in the, you know, the, the initial stage, the prototype initial stage here allows you to grow over time into that ultimate condition. So, you know, understanding that, you know, starting small and then, and growing eventually as demand dictates. So, the airport benefits, and Rick did a great job of talking about the economic potential of, of an airport and the air park along with that, and, and the feasibility study touched on this at a very high level. You know, initially looking at about a $900,000 total economic impact of the airport, and that's just factoring in the jobs, the payroll of the businesses on the airport. So, beyond that, you get into the visitors coming to your airport and, and the individuals coming to look for, for their business development opportunities within the city, and what they end up developing is, is beyond what we're evaluating in this here. So, there's, there's great potential in the economic benefit of having an airport. The transportation benefits, like we've talked about, having that here locally, rather than having your, your community and your citizens have to drive to other neighboring airports and things like that, have considerable costs and impacts associated with them. So, having, again, a local airport is going to be very beneficial overall. So, the conclusion, it's very straightforward. You know, like I've already stated, the, the biggest piece of this is that demand right now, and our conclusion is that there is very, very strong demand for an airport in Peoria. That is really where the feasibility study leaves off, and, and the whole purpose of the next steps is to look at, okay, where is that airport going to best fit into the community, and what are the environmental impacts of that? And, and so, we will evaluate that at the next level, but really, again, at a high level, that's, this is, this purpose is to say, this is feasible and worthy of further It meets the threshold for feasibility. Like I've already said, the FAA and their National Plan of Integrated Airport System, they become part of that system. You need to have a minimum of 10-based aircraft. And as we show here, we, we show a need or a demand of 80 initial-based aircraft, so you certainly meet those requirements. There is a void in the regional system, certainly with the number of people waiting on a hangar waiting list. And so, this airport would also serve as a capacity relief for Sky Harbor International Airport. That's kind of the purpose of the general aviation airports around the metropolitan area here, is to relieve Sky Harbor, so it can serve in its function as, as a commercial service airport, whereas these would be serving all the other forms of aviation, which is why it's called general aviation. So, there, there's a lot of benefits to this, as I've, as we've talked about, and, and certainly is viable and worthy of further study. There are two, I'll just talk real quick on, on kind of the steps forward and what your options are in terms of development of the airport. Now, if you want to follow the FAA's route and do their process, we're talking about probably a seven-to-10-year process of going through the site selection study, you have to do an airport master plan, an ALP development, airport layout plan, and the environmental process. Each of those processes are going to involve numerous opportunities for public outreach and, and comment. The FAA very much wants these processes to be, to be done out in the open, so it's a transparent process, so everyone in the community has an opportunity to put their thoughts and feedback into the process. That is absolutely going to be a requirement. And so, it is a long process, but if you follow those steps and those processes that the FAA has lined out and become part of the National Plan of Integrated Airport System, you will be eligible for grant funding up to 90%, and possibly even a 95% for, for eligible projects. And that includes these studies that we're talking about doing, and then ultimately even the development and construction of the airport itself. So, historically, 90, like I said, 90% of eligible projects are funded through the Airport Improvement Program. Right now, Congress is, is looking at reauthorizing, reauthorizing the Airport Improvement Program, and the initial drafts of that reauthorization are talking about taking it up to 95% eligible funding. So, again, if you follow their process, it takes a little bit longer, but you are opening yourself up to a great opportunity in terms of grant funding for your airport. If you choose not to go that route, you certainly can self-fund, and you can do it much, much faster, but then you would be fronting the cost entirely on your own.
So, thank you, Eric, and we'll take some questions here in a minute, but I want to, we know there's a lot of questions, and there's a lot of interested people right behind me. But tomorrow, we will have this, the entire final feasibility study report. Okay. That's not a fire alarm. Okay. Yes, no, we're going to post the entire feasibility study reports on the website for anyone to download, look at, review. Also, there's, in front of you, Mayor and Council, there's an Economic Impact Analysis Memorandum that backs up the $1 billion conservative estimate for what we call outside-the-fence economic development. And there's an air park fact sheet that's been on the website since June of 2023, and I will tell you, at least 95% of the questions we receive are answered in that fact sheet. So, we've updated that. We're going to put them all in one spot, an easy spot to, for anybody to grab and download, and you have all the information we have. It's pure data. And, you know, with that, we can take some questions.
Counselor Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I think you answered my first question, is when is this going to be available? Because there's a lot of information for us to digest, and, and I know the residents have been emailing and calling and wanting this information, so I'm glad that you're going to be putting that out on their, on the website. Can you go back to the first slide, as far as the timeframe? You've got a long way to go. Actually, maybe it was the third slide. So, when is the soonest that this is going to come to council for, for a vote? Because there's a lot, there was a lot of steps in that process, it looked like seven or eight studies that this had to go through. So, at what point does this come back to council, or come to council for an actual vote?
Mayor and Vice Mayor, depends on which route you want to take. If you take the NIPUS route, it's, it's several years down the road as you go through the various studies. If you take the non-NIPUS route, we're probably taking, if I had to guess, a year to year and a half, where you would make a decision whether, you know, you go forward or not. But it's really important that we do the studies, so you can make a fully informed decision. So, I think that's important. And a note on, for the public, is tonight's, in front of Mayor and Council, is the first time this council has actually gotten a copy of the reports. I think I broke the printer last night. Why did we wait to do this? Because the study wasn't done until very late last week, and in fact, we had a revision because some page numbers were, had to be corrected. So, we turned in our homework, completed and double-checked. So, and, but, you know, you're probably looking a year and a half, two years out, maybe. I think, if I had to guess, fiscal year 2026. Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Schaefer.
Thank you, Mayor. Rick, Eric, good presentation, a lot of data. Look forward to diving in and digesting it, and thank you for making it available to the public tomorrow. Rick, just a couple of questions. I think it was slide two. It talked about the $44 billion impact or the $121 billion impact. Something that we might want to follow up, because I know this information is fresh, is, is how much did the city subsidize? And so, the, that's great to see the economic impact, but just, is there any subsidies involved there? And then, slide three, I think it's the next one. It might be. I apologize. You talked about maintenance, and like the ongoing costs of, if we have, for future, yeah, maybe it's there. Maybe for future, if we have an idea of like what the ongoing maintenance or operational costs would be, that would be good. And then, slide five, I think, Rick, I think it's two, yeah, that one right there. It talked about the six different studies, the evaluation process, and I think Eric answered this question, so correct me if I'm wrong. The public will be involved in every single one of these processes. Is that correct, or these, these studies?
Mayor and Council, yes, that's correct, yes. The intent, each of these studies will be to make information available to the public and allow them to offer feedback.
And, Eric, just to follow up on that.
Mayor and Councilman Schaefer, if I could add, we know there's a lot of, you know, data to digest here, and, and we get that, and we're happy to come back, more than that's required by the FAA, because we know there's a lot to download. It's complex. I will tell you, going through this process, it's very, very complex. There's a lot to download, which probably was one reason why you probably get a lot of questions from the public, because there is so much information, there's so many unknowns. So, we're happy to come back and, and do another study session, if the council deems that's be helpful, even before we get to the site selection study. But when we get the site selection study done, we'll have another public meeting.
Thank you, Rick. Couple of questions. You talked about Luke Air Force Base. Thank you for identifying Luke Air Force Base. I served at Luke 20-plus years ago. Now, so, was Luke taken into consideration, or is this just a feasibility based upon the number of planes and flight patterns, or will there? And you talked about another consultant doing some additional work for Luke, or taking them into consideration. Can you expand on that, please, Eric?
Yeah, Mayor and Councilman, that's a great question. So, you're right, this was the feasibility of an airport based upon the demand for general aviation activity here locally. So, it didn't necessarily factor in Luke in terms of, you know, how we look at that, Luke being a military installation. But the next step in this process will very much factor in Luke and how they operate in their airspace, because the last thing we want to do is create conflict with, with how they're operating in the airspace and their, their routes to and from the military operating areas and things like that. So, the subconsultant we have lined up to look at that is very, very experienced in looking at military airspace and very complex airspace and, and making sure that, that there's no conflict. So, so they will be brought on to look at that during the site selection process.
Yeah, just a point of clarification. So, Luke has been involved in this process. So, if you know son Rusty Mitchell, who I believe I saw him walk in today, he's been part of the team. We've also been working with Chris Toll over at Luke to make sure that they are involved in this process, because, again, whether it's required or not... Because again, whether it's required or not, it's good, it's, it's the right thing to do, is to involve them very, very early in the process. So that's one, that's one very, very well.
Let, let, let me add to that, and we've had multiple conversations. In fact, I, I've had the conversation openly with, with both the commanding general of Luke, as well as Chris Toll, but also Mr. Mitchell, who represents the city, who served there for a very long time and actually defended the base from the onslaught of overreaching. And we've made it very clear throughout the process that our job is to protect Luke. I think that's, that's not only our, our city's job, it's our nation's job, is to protect what is the fifth-largest air force in the world, and make sure that Luke is actually protected and their airspace is protected. Every step of the way, if you have a conversation with any of the individuals that are out there, and I would ask, I would tell you, if you ask Rusty Mitchell as well, he will tell you, he would not do anything, in fact, he has said this multiple times, he would never do anything that would actually jeopardize, and neither would we. It is extremely important to our city. We have a lot of airmen, including yourself, that served there, but also live there, and, you know, we want to make sure that Luke is protected throughout this process in every step of the way. There is no factor that we would even look into any of these factors if we thought that it would actually hurt Luke. So just so everybody understands that.
Thank you, Mayor. And one final question. Eric, at the very end, you talked about grant funding, 90 to 95%. Can you expand on that a little bit? And what would be, and then you talked about self-funding, what would be the average cost of a, of a facility of this size?
Sure, Mayor Councilman, great, again, great question. So the grant funding would be through the Airport Improvement Program. It's a, it's a user-based system that collects taxes on passenger tickets and aviation fuels and things like that. So that's how the fund is, is funded. And so an eligible project, if you're included in the National Plan of Integrated Airport System, is, can be funded at 95, or 90%, possibly up to 95%. The Arizona State Department of Transportation will also contribute half of the local match on that. And so there is participation at the state level on federally-eligible projects. So then, then on any eligible project, you're left with the, the remainder of that local. In terms of the total estimated project costs, we've put together for this, initially, that initial stage is about $150 million total. Factoring in your eligibility of, of federal and state grants, you're looking at a local match of about 23% of that total. And so a, a good chunk of that will be covered by, potentially by federal and state grants.
Counselor Patina.
Thank you, Mayor. Can either, a lot of us up here have heard concerns about noise generated from the aircraft. Can you speak to that issue?
Sure, yeah, and that's a great question, and certainly something of great concern anytime you're talking about airport-related issues. The site selection study will include some environmental evaluations of potential noise impacts, because certainly the, the priority is to ensure the airport is compatible with its surrounding land uses, and, and obviously, if there's any impacts on residential properties or noise-sensitive areas, that's going to be a, a topic of discussion and concern. And, you know, part of, again, the master plan, the site selection study, each of the following studies that will be performed will look into the potential noise impacts. In particularly, the environmental study will perform a, a noise footprint for the airport based upon the projected levels of activity and the types of aircraft operating at the airport, and identify potential noise-sensitive areas based upon that analysis. And, and as part of the site selection, master plan, environmental, if there are any potential significant impacts of noise discovered, there's ways to mitigate that, or, or, you know, scoring that in terms of your site selection study, if there's a site that, that has a minimal impact on noise, you could score that at a much higher priority. But yes, we've not looked at that yet in terms of noise in this feasibility study, but that will very much be part of the next several studies that, that are prepared.
Counselor Crawford.
Is the city looking to pursue this at any cost to the taxpayer?
Mayor, Councilmember, that was a loaded question. No. No, of course not. You know, it has to make, you know, business sense, financial sense for us to do that. So absolutely. I think, you know, that's a, a big reason for doing the economic impact studies, to make sure that this is a positive economic impact to the city. If it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to move forward.
Thank you. I have one more question, Mayor. So has the city worked with Kaufman in the past? And how was Kaufman selected to do this?
Okay, so I, I guess I can answer that. So roughly 20 years ago, the city did do feasibility study, and guess what, that was done by Kaufman as well. So they're kind of the resident experts in this space for the size of airport and proposed airport, that type of thing. And they were on the state contract, so we ran it through procurement, checked all the boxes.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.